Good evening. The Monday, December 13th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Newsma?
Here.
Councilmember Burns?
Just request, before we move on with the roll call, if we could have quiet in the council chambers, please. Go ahead, Clerk.
Councilmember Burns? Councilmember Saffron? Councilmember Revel?
Here.
Councilmember Reed will be joining shortly. Councilmember Fleming will not be here tonight. Councilmember Kelly will also not be here tonight. Councilmember Braithwaite?
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Thank you. Quorum, having answered the call of the roll, we're ready to do our work. The first item on the agenda is my public announcements and proclamations. Unfortunately, I have a number of things to cover this evening, beginning with the fact that, as the Clerk alluded to, we are without councilmembers Kelly and Fleming this evening. Both of their mothers passed away within the last week. So, we are sending them our love, our thoughts, our prayers, and wishing them peace in this very, very difficult time. I also want to report that Councilmember Burns and I attended the funeral of Carl Dennison III this Saturday morning. It was a devastating, devastating time and a reminder, not only of the life that he lived, but I think the solemn responsibility that we have as policymakers for this city to create a safe environment where our youth are able to live and to thrive. And I left that occasion yet further recommitted to that work, and I know that all my colleagues up here feel the same way. And we continue to send again our love and our thoughts to the Dennison family and all those who were affected by the tragedy that occurred two weeks ago yesterday. Next, I want to share with the community that after decades of distinguished service to the city of Evanston and about a half year of, I would say extraordinarily effective service to the city of Evanston, interim Police Chief Aretha Barnes has announced her retirement, effective in early January. I think we can all understand, you know, she was thrust in that position without warning, without applying for a job. She took on that responsibility with diligence and commitment, the true heart of a public servant. And after doing that for quite a few months, felt that it was time for her to move on. We owe her a huge, huge debt of gratitude. I know that many of us are very sad that she's leaving, but I think we have to acknowledge that she's earned that and more. And so, I just share with her my very, very deepest heartfelt appreciation and, you know, wish her really wonderful next chapter in what has been a really distinguished and extraordinary life, and I know will continue to be that. Last of all, speaking of distinguished service, I just want to share that it was my privilege at the Administration of Public Works Committee meeting this evening to share recognitions with a number of city staff who have worked for the city of Evanston for 25, 30, 35, or 40 years. It was really moving for me personally to see all assembled together, that many people at that level of dedication and experience working for the city. And I just want to extend in this format as well my thanks and gratitude and appreciation and congratulations to each of them. Our residents have benefited enormously from the time that they gave and the expertise that they have amassed, which then continues to allow them to do yet more for us as they continue to work in these roles. So, thank you and congratulations to all of them. And that concludes my announcements. Next on the agenda is the City Manager's public announcements.
Good evening, Mayor Bis, members of City Council, Clerk Mendoza, Kelly Gundersky, interim City Manager. I'd like to echo the sentiments, Mayor, for the families of Councilmember Fleming and Kelly. Our thoughts and prayers are with them. I also want to echo your sentiments on interim Police Chief Barnes. She has served in a wonderful capacity and has been just a great partner to me and has been extremely helpful in navigating the transition. So, I do wish her and her family the best as well. Additionally, I want to extend my appreciation and support to the Evanston Police Department for the quick and careful work they did in partnership with Nortaf to bring forth an arrest out of the tragedy that occurred, Mr. Dennison's life and the victims. And so, they worked extraordinarily hard and fast to move the wheels of justice forward. So, I want to thank the Police Department as well. I also have tonight Toby Sax here from the Arts Council to discuss the National Endowment for the Arts Grant Award. Toby?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm pleased to bring some good news, that the Arts Council's been actively looking for ways to increase its budget beyond what the city coffers can afford. So, this year, we worked with staff to apply for two grants from the National Endowment for the Arts, a source the Arts Council hadn't approached for over 10 years. I'm pleased to say that we recently heard we'd been awarded both grants, one for $150,000 and one for $30,000. The $150,000 is a one-time grant through the NEA's allocation of American Rescue Plan funds. 10% of that will go to the city to offset some staff costs, and the remaining $135,000 will be used to supplement our annual cultural fund program, adding an opportunity to apply for general operating expenses by arts organizations affected by the pandemic. Only six art councils in the country received these grants, and only three in Illinois. That was Evanston, Chicago, and Rockford. So, we really have to thank Tashik Kerr on the staff's terrific crafting of the application that helped us be successful. The other grant, the $30,000 one, is also exciting because it's one that we can and obviously will apply for annually. It's a matching grant that doubles the city's contribution to the annual cultural fund grant program, and local arts organizations can apply to the program for program expenses. These two additions take our cultural fund budget up significantly next year from $30,000 to $195,000. And as in the past two years, of course, BIPOC organizations and those with programs serving underserved communities will be favored as these grants are awarded. We're really excited to be able to make a significant contribution to our entrepreneurial and untiring arts organizations as they continue to brighten our cultural lives with their work. And thank you for the opportunity to take the minutes to pass on the news.
Thank you. Wonderful news, Toby. Thank you. And thank you to Tashik Kerr, who's the Assistant to the City Manager. I also want to introduce Darryl King from the Water Department to talk about the ILSA WWI Water Ambassador Program. Darryl?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Mayor Bis, councilmembers, Clerk Mendoza, Darryl King, Water Production Bureau Chief of Public Works. I'm here to briefly tell you about the Water Illinois Section, American Waterworks Association Water Ambassador Program. We've applied and are participating in that program. And it's an initiative created to elevate public perception, knowledge, consumer education regarding the water industry. And it's comprised of three levels, bronze, silver, and gold, and we've enrolled in the gold level. Each level has standards, and the gold level has standards one through four. And each of those standards have activities that you have to complete in order to achieve that level, in this case, gold. And many of those activities are, you know, outreach in terms of infographics that we provide, information about the industry on the website, weekly social media posts, things of that nature. And at the end, once we attain this gold level standard, as a water ambassador, we'll receive a sign like Tree City USA that we can display at the entrance of our city. And each year thereafter, we would get a sticker which would indicate, you know, our years in the program. And so, as part of that standard, one of those standards or activities is I provided each one of you a drinking water one, two, three guide, and this guide is set up to provide information about water resource management, services, infrastructure, and planning. And it helps elected officials and community leadership become more informed about drinking water and to help us all make better decisions moving forward. And so, in that drinking water one, two, three are various sections. It's like nine total that covers drinking water, infrastructure, source water, all of those different things. And so, what we've done in each category or each section was a series of questions. And so, staff has answered all of the questions for you. I'm sure some of you know a great deal about water, but there may be things that you don't. Everyone may have different levels of understanding about what we do and what it takes to get the water from the lake, treat it, send it to your house, and when you cut it on. It was a lot that happened to get it to that point. And so, this gives you a great deal of information, a great summary on all aspects of water that, again, maybe you knew or you didn't know. So, staff has answered those questions for you. I'm sure you may have questions, follow-up questions after that. Feel free to reach out directly to me, and I'll get responses or whatever questions you may have. I can provide answers to those questions.
Thank you, Darryl. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is communications from the City Clerk.
I also want to offer my condolences to Cecily and Councilmember Kelly, Councilmember Fleming. And it's a hard time for a lot of us up here, here in our community and in our own city council members. I also want to acknowledge the public comment that we received online from Jen Pappas, Trish Connolly, and one for PND from John Sherry. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to public comment. This evening, every participant in public comment will be given three minutes. As always, we begin with those who signed up to speak in person, beginning with Lucia
Good evening. We are here to speak on behalf of Lionel Jean Baptiste and the naming of his street, the renaming of his street. And so, tonight, I am speaking on behalf of myself and my sisters who couldn't be here tonight, on behalf of our parents who undoubtedly would be bursting with pride at the thought of Lionel being honored in this way, especially in Evanston, where they raised us. There are six of us, and Lionel is the oldest and only son. Thank you. Not only was he the protective older brother as we grew up, but he was also our mentor and teacher. In order to raise six children, our parents worked multiple jobs in pursuit of a better life for us, and that was their central focus. Lionel actually was the critical piece of the puzzle because he gave us what our parents did not always have the capacity to do as they struggled to build a life for us. He made sure we knew our history. He taught us to love ourselves and our people near and far. He taught us to celebrate our Haitian culture and this Evanston community we called home. He taught us how to navigate a sheltered Catholic school experience and how to transition to the ETHS experience. The lessons were many and came by way of long talks, discussions, letters, but mostly modeled by example. By excelling academically, to playing sports, to being class president, and even organizing student protests at Evanston Township in the late '60s, he was unknowingly teaching and inspiring his sisters, cousins, friends, and classmates. Once he left for college, he continued that spirit of leadership and commitment to community on campus and beyond, which he brought back to Evanston in 1984, guided, in my opinion, by a few simple principles: selflessness, mentorship, relationship building, and resistance to injustices. I believe Lionel has worked and lived by those principles throughout his journey as a public servant in this community that we love so much. In fact, when I think about it, he has served and continues to serve as a big brother, friend, mentor, teacher to all who cross his path. Most importantly, he has been that critical piece of the puzzle, again, that has helped Evanston to develop, grow, and become a more fair and just place for all who live here. What better way to honor the mark that this dedicated citizen has made on this great city than to rename his block Judge Lionel Jean Baptiste Court? We are so proud of you, Lionel, and mommy and daddy are certainly grinning from ear to ear saying, "Bravo, Lionel. Bravo." Congratulations. We love you.
The next speaker is Jude Ladeur.
Good evening, members of the council, City Clerk Mendoza, and interim City Manager Gundersky. Thank you for the service, your service to the community. And thank you for allowing me to, this opportunity, to lift up my voice in support of all of the great work of this man that we call Lionel Jean Baptiste. And I will do it from my perspective, my lived experience. So, Lionel migrated here from the island of Haiti with his parents in the '60s. There was a wave of Haitians coming into the Chicagoland area in Evanston in the late '50s and the '60s, and Lionel was one of those. He was a big brother, the generation of my big brother and big sister. A dream fulfilled, Lionel embodies all the hopes, dreams, and aspirations of those who came to a land unknown looking for a better life. As we progressed throughout childhood, Lionel was a bit, just a little bit older than I am. I always looked up to him. At some point, he went off to college, graduated from Princeton University. Post-graduation, he was engaged in lifting up his voice for those who are voiceless and for those who are underserved. When he returned, we knew the stories of what he had done on his travels, through education, and being an advocate for those who are underrepresented. Well, let me tell you, the expectations were the same when he came back. He impressed upon us all who were younger that we needed to have an impact on our community. What are you doing for the community? So, as I was on my journey and left Evanston, I continued to stay in touch with Lionel. Ultimately, when I came back, I knew there was no choice. I was going to give back to the community. So, as I came back, I got involved in an area where I felt most comfortable, and I became a board member of Foundation 65 through education, as I'm an educator. Ultimately, I ran for the Board of District 202, and I became a District 202 board member. And I can say that those two experiences, among others, are two of the most defining moments of my life as an Evanstonian. Why? Because I was able to give back to my community that gave so much to my parents as immigrants. So, I just want to say that I want to underscore the fact that Lionel does not only blaze a trail for himself, but he brings so many with him. And when you see someone such as myself who chose to be a servant leader, I was highly motivated by the example set by this man, Judge Lionel Jean Baptiste. And I highly recommend and endorse a renaming of the street where he has lived for years.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lisa Ladeur.
Good evening, Mayor Bis and the City Council. Thank you so much for giving us a few moments to express our excitement, our gratitude for the next steps to take place in Evanston. It's been an honor since the late '60s to watch Judge Jean Baptiste work on behalf of the underserved and underrepresented in our town. I've known him since I was a little girl, born in Evanston. My children are not allowed to call him big brother, uncle. We call him judge. We call him judge on the streets. We call him judge at the dinner table because until Judge Jean Baptiste became judge, we did not personally know a judge of color. Born in Evanston, my pediatrician was Caucasian, our attorney was Caucasian, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And we're grateful to have been raised in such a great town as Evanston. But when we're able to see those who have succeeded, who look like us, it helps our entire community. Just a couple of things that I've learned from him that I'd like to share. First of all, he requires that we make a commitment to our community, without question. He says it's a responsibility. And then, he's taught us how to go across the aisle. He says it is a requirement that you work with everyone to reach your goal. You don't have to be friends. You don't have to have them over for dinner, but we work with others with respect. And I want to thank him for teaching me that because it's helped me in my professional career as well. He says that you must serve your community, and when necessary, it may require sacrifice. And so, we do it for the betterment of our town. Thank you, Evanston, for always making the right choice. God bless you all.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cecilia McHugh.
Good evening. Good evening. Is it okay to pull down my mask or no? Okay, that helps. Well, wait a sec. I'm here to talk about the issue, the 1900 Sherman Proposal, and I'm wondering if it was considered putting off the vote, given that two all councilmembers are here. I did not contact those councilmembers myself. I did not want to disturb them. But I'm wondering if that was considered. I believe they both have strong opinions on the matter. But I can proceed, and I'm just throwing that out for you to consider. I also have a document to distribute, if that's okay? And shall I put it on the end here?
Good evening. I'm here to ask you to please carefully consider the proposal that HAC is putting before you, which ignores the needs of and shows insufficient concern for the safety and well-being of current and future residents of the Pearlman Building and the proposed Emerson Building, and ignores the well-being of the surrounding community as well. HAC encountered structural difficulties that prevented them from providing the amount of onsite parking in their approved plan as designed. Rather than reducing the number of units onsite in parallel with the reduction of the number of the net onsite parking places, HAC proposes to eliminate nearly all of the net new onsite parking places in the approved plan. Referring to the document I distributed, HAC purports to be reducing the number of net new onsite parking places roughly in parallel with the reduction in the number of units. Not at all the case. The approved plan provided 15 net new parking places and 168 new units, and therefore provided one onsite parking place for every 11 units, woefully inadequate for the needs and safety of a senior living facility. The proposed new plan is even more inadequate. The plan is to provide three net new onsite parking places for 152 new units, therefore planning to provide one net new onsite parking place for every 50 new units, and this in a senior living facility. HAC's current residents are seniors and the disabled, a population with low mobility, as HAC attests in an article on their website related to the renovation of the Pearlman in 2016. Richard Minakio of HAC is quoted, "Being able to age in place is priceless, and we are taking bold steps now to meet the needs of an aging population who desperately need affordable housing that is safe and can accommodate people with disabilities." The article reports that there is an increasing need for home modifications that allow for maximal, maximum residential mobility as homeowners age. Where's the concern for the mobility? Did you say time? Oh, okay. Where's the concern for the mobility safety? I'll just finish up this paragraph. An ability to age in place, in HAC's current proposal, somehow seniors' ability to walk and safely walk to E2, two blocks away is assumed, although the route requires crossing an alley, an access drive used by garbage trucks, two streets, and this has a potential to be especially dangerous in the dark and fall weather for seniors. I talked to governmental organizations that were shocked that the city was even allowing any of the parking to be off-site, given seniors were the target population. I think the Pearlman residents were told that they'd be able to park either at the Emerson at the link, and they're going to be parking down at E2, two blocks away. They're going to be really upset when they realize that. And remember, in closing, please consider that affordable housing is not a black and white issue. Housing that provides affordable housing to residents whose needs are not adequately served is of questionable benefit to anyone other than to the developers. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Eric Passit.
I'm just going to pull this down. Well, how many? Ms. Eric Passit. I'm the owner of North Shore Apartments and Condos, and I live in the 4th Ward. And I'm here tonight for probably a pretty unpopular subject, which is crime in Evanston, which is, as most people know, has increased by, I think your figures on the website were about 20%. And I've lived in Evanston almost 35 years, 56 now, in my early twenties. So, and I used to feel real safe in Evanston. And as the later I get into adult, I don't feel that way anymore. Every day you, I get the Evanston Now every day on my phone, every day you have another crime, which is very sad, another car getting broken into, another smash and grab. I mean, it's just, it's embarrassing, for one thing, being a part of Evanston, but also it's scary, you know? I know some people who live in Evanston thought about owning guns. Now, I'm not saying that's, I'm not of that party, but, or nor am I judging it, but that's, you know, I read here in your budget for 2022 that the police department has multiple positions held vacant for 2021. In addition to the positions held vacant, about 20% of the In addition to the positions held vacant, about 20% of the budgeted positions are vacant. Okay? That's kind of scary, you know? And four weeks ago, I heard something about a football, one of the Northwestern football games going on. And afterwards, people were around saying, "Defund the police." Now, I know that's not our attitude, okay? And nor am I accusing anybody of that attitude. But however, what are we going to do about it differently? You know, is the crime just going to continue to increase, and people are going to move out? That's the way I feel as a long-term citizen. And I know I'm not the only one. You know, this is not, I mean, our city has grown, and yet our police department has shrunk. And, you know, and plus, our attitude towards it, I don't think is, I mean, I have high respect for people in the law enforcement, and I don't always feel like that's the case in this city. I'm not saying it comes from this council, but I just feel like in general. And it's, you know, I think there's other things we could do besides just law enforcement. I think we could help our youth in a lot of different ways that I try to do myself that I'm not going to go into. But, I mean, you know, I don't want to belabor a subject, but I'd just like, I'd like to challenge you. I know you made a statement a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Mayor, after the person, you know, unfortunately, the young adult was shot and died, that you would do something, we would do something different about this. And I'm just, you know, I'm wondering what we're going to do differently. So, that's why I'm here.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ray Friedman.
Good evening, everyone. First, I wanted to also give my condolences to Claire Kelly and Cicely Fleming for the passing of their mom. And congratulations to Judge Baptiste for the street naming. I wanted to address a couple of issues again with the budget. I'm sorry that we didn't have a budget meeting with the residents. So there's just a few things I want to point out with tonight's agenda. A6, I don't disagree with the project, Oakton Street Corridor. I do disagree with spending all general obligation bonds to do it from three different years, 2019, '21, and '22. On the bills list, it's $20 million in bills. I've never seen a bills list for $20 million. In researching it, I had to go through 44 pages of a bills list in order to see where all the money's going. I'm not even done. It'd take days. But it turns out 14 million is for debt service payment. And I'm wondering, are we making debt service payments, you know, twice a year, three times a year? I thought it should be paid monthly or bimonthly. I don't know. But I think debt service payments came to about 24 million. So this is for 14 million. And normally, bills list and payrolls, 2.8 million every two weeks. So I'm still missing $3 million of the bills list. That, I don't know why we have an extra $3 million of payments. On A9, okay, there, again, I don't disagree with the funding for American Rescue Plan for Tourism and Outdoor Recreation Program, but you are obligating $1.3 million in future general obligation bonds. I don't understand A11. It's a good program, okay? It's a program to oversee Racial Equity Diversity and Inclusion Committee. So you're paying $50,000
15 seconds.
For a committee to oversee a committee. I don't get it. All right, there was one more thing. Give me a second. A15, A15 is $217,000 in general obligation bonds, again, from three different years. And that's about it.
Thank you very much.
We shouldn't be using general obligation bonds to fund the city, and $60 million in extra budget.
That concludes our in-person portion of the public comments. We move now to those who are giving comment online, beginning with Marie Lynn Toussaint, followed by Dolores Holmes, and then Robin Rue Simmons. If Marie Lynn Toussaint is not in the Zoom right now, we'll move on with Dolores Holmes, followed by Robin Rue Simmons, and then Gerald Day.
Good evening, everyone. I am here tonight to offer my support and to encourage you for the street naming for my friend and member and former colleague, Judge Lionel Jean Baptiste. I have known the judge for a long time. I've been in Evanston for a long time. I've worn many hats. And in my days in the 80s, when I was director at Family Focus, I got to know them through the beginning of the Haitian Congress at that time. And so I consider myself an adopted Haitian. And I certainly, and part of being on the council with him, was my honor to serve with him. And when I came on, he took me on his wings and really mentored me and helped me to navigate. It's not an easy job setting up there, and there's so much to learn. And he was just so kind and generous to me. And so I called him my brother. And this is a long overdue honor for him because he's done so much for our community. And he doesn't stop with the Haitian community. I want to make that really clear. He works for the Evanston community. He's done that ever since I've known him. And him and his family, everyone in that family is just so great. And nor his wife, everyone, the kids, I've worked with them all. And they are really a great family, and this is an honor that, as I said, is long overdue. So I certainly hope that you will give him that tonight. And before I leave, I just want to express my condolences to both Councilmember Kelly and Flemmons for their losses. And I also just want to express my gratitude to Chief Aretha Barnes for her service of 25 years in this community, 36 altogether in law enforcement. But she has been a really wonderful asset to our city. So thank you, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. The next speaker is Robin Rue Simmons, who will be followed by Gerald Day and then Bruce Ennabach. If Robin Rue Simmons isn't in the Zoom yet, we'll move on and come back. We'll move on to Gerald Day, who will be followed by Bruce Ennabach, and then Tony Ray. I believe you're on mute, Mr. Day.
Good afternoon, everyone. I just want to say, Ms. Holmes, you're welcome to be a Haitian, to our community, anytime. We do want to thank the council for thinking about doing this for Lionel. I want to say that Lionel is my neighbor. I run the Haitian Festival and the Kids Going Back to School Festival. And thank you, Mayor. Thank you, most of you, almost all of you on the council, have always helped us every year with the festival. But I live three doors down from Lionel. We live on the cul-de-sac. And this naming is not only good for us, our family home is there. And for years, Lionel and I and our families have been friends, been together. I can even remember when my mom was sick, Lionel would always pull up on the cul-de-sac every day when he was coming home. He would stop in to say hello to my mom, to say hello to us. Or if my friends and the rest of the Haitians would be playing soccer out there, he'll always stop to say hello, or even play a little soccer if he could. So it's a great pleasure for me to know this. He's been a great neighbor. He's a brother. He's a mentor. He's great for our community. He's done so much. And through him, I'm also, you know, he's also helped with the festival, with everything. So we actually are on the street because we've been doing things for so long in that street. So it's a great pleasure to know that this will be named under a Haitian name for, we have a lot going on in our country right now. So every little thing that could bring a little happiness to the community, not just the Haitian community, the whole community as a whole here, you know? The first word, he was also the second ward alderman for a while. And at that particular time, when he used to come see my mom, he wanted us to try to name the cul-de-sac under my parents, my family, my family name. So it's good that the name will be to a Haitian name because we do a lot in this corner, and we do do a lot with our community, with the migrants that are here now, and with the migrants that had come through the 70s, my parents, his family, we all were helping. So I really thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to say a few words. And again, we'll see you at the festival this year and the Kids Back to School Festival. Have a good day, and thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Bis.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Bruce Ennabach, followed by Tony Ray, and then Robin Rue Simmons.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Bruce Ennabach, first ward. I'm addressing P2, which is 1900 Sherman Avenue. The citizens in the city of Evanston are being taken for a ride in reference to the county's proposal residential tower at 1900 Sherman. Now, here comes Cook County with a residential high-rise project which provides 70% affordable housing units, which are partially subsidized by 30% of the residential units which are not subsidized, but rather are market rate. But wait, there's more. The 70% affordable units somehow magically became market rate and thus not affordable, a reversal of what was offered initially. Here comes Cook County seeking and receiving relief from the R6 zoning requirement of a 12-foot separation between the existing and new buildings. The city granted a change in the zoning from R6 to C1A. Now, by the county's own admission, the sole reason for seeking that C1A zoning relief was to avoid the 12-foot building separation issue. But wait, there's more. Due to a serious structural issue, the buildings are now planned to be separated by that 12-foot separation under R6 zoning, thus eliminating the need for C1A zoning. Accordingly, this project is no longer the same project which was approved by the previous council. It's no longer a C1A project. It is now an R6 project. The project additionally was not appropriately C1A at all. To quote the city's webpage, quote, "The C1A Commercial Mixed-Use District is intended to provide locations for development of mixed-use buildings consisted of retail-oriented and office uses on the ground level and office uses in residential dwellings located above." This project is not a mixed-use development. It has no retail component. It is clearly not C1A. This is an R6 project. And with the proposed changes, accordingly, must now be reconsidered under R6 zoning. But wait, there's more. The foundation and structural issue previously mentioned is a serious matter requiring investigation by the city, not the county. Now, I'm not a structural engineer, but I have been around enough such issues to be very wary of the county's proposed solution. We should not trust the county's judgment here on such an important issue. We certainly do not want to have a Surfside, Florida, building collapse. What needs to be done to address this issue is a very expensive shoring up of the existing 1900 building, much like that what was required by this city for the new South Mather building, which was similarly abutted to a building that was also built on a slab foundation.
15 seconds.
Now, I am happy and pleased that the county develops affordable housing and happy to pay taxes for that activity. But this project is not that, and rather only masquerades as an affordable housing project. This project is primarily a market-rate luxury residential development, the likes of which the county has no business being involved in. While I may support my listening projects by the county, which are in the interest of helping those in need, I cannot support the county using our tax dollars going to speculative market-rate residential buildings such as this. And I cannot therefore support our city fostering such foolishness.
The next.
Please reject this proposal, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tony Ray, who will be followed by Robin Rue Simmons, and then Mike Fasilco.
I'm unable to start the video, so I guess you'll just have to. All right.
Audio's fine. We hear you clearly. Oh, we see you now too.
Okay, there I am. All right. I'm Tony Ray. I'm a resident of the 4th Ward and a proud member of Joining Forces for Affordable Housing, which is a consortium of many local groups dedicated to affordable housing for people of all ages. Joining Forces for Affordable Housing enthusiastically approves the major adjustments to the plan development at 1900 Sherman. We really think it is a major and important building to be built here. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Robin Rue Simmons, who will be followed by Mike Fasilco, and then Carlos Sutton.
Thank you, Mayor Bis, and good evening, City Council. I wanted to call in and add of the street naming for the judge. We all have our stories of Judge Lionel, but I can say I have seen him contribute, later I'm not doing video, in an incredible way, particularly in how he has supported emerging leaders and invested in crises that we deal with. And of course, his commitment to reparations and what he's done to get the city headed in that direction. It would be a great honor to name this street after him. And I just wanted to be on record as adding my support for the street naming. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mike Fasilco, who will be followed by Carlos Sutton.
So I also wanted to express my condolences to both Claire Kelly and Cicely Fleming. You know, their mothers must have been remarkable people. You just look at the two model council members, the two model citizens that their mothers produced and raised. As far as the agenda goes, I'd like to know what the status of the city manager's search is. At the previous meeting, PND and even somewhat at APW, you know, forgive me, but there's a lot of bellyaching regarding the staff being overworked and this and that. You know, Councilmember Winn and Joanna Niden, you know, kind of blocking something that Councilmember Reed wanted to just have a good discussion about and maybe. just have a, a, a good discussion about and, and maybe proceed further at a later time. Um, it just seems like there's, the, the, the staff ship is, you know, siding to one side or the other. It's, it's not, it's not uh, working very well right now. And I'd just like to know officially, what is the status of the city manager's search? And when will citizens learn who the candidates are? Uh, this has been a, been top secret and we deserve to know what's going on in that regard. Uh, I'd also like to know what the subject of the city special city council meeting is tomorrow. Uh, it says personnel, but in what regard? Are we talking about hiring people? Are we talking about firing people? Uh, there needs to be a little bit more detail about what that city council, special city council meeting is, so that citizens can be more informed. Lastly, th- there was mention, I asked a question at APW about the fourteen million dollar payment that's in the city bills this, this period. And how that money was, how that debt was being paid for? What was the source of the income, or, or, source of the revenue? And we were told um, that it was property taxes for the most part. There are some other fund sources, but primarily property taxes. It's not supposed to be property taxes, paying for geo bonds, to pay for the debt. It's, it's just a cycle that has to be broken.
Fifteen seconds.
And related to that, I attended a Zoom meeting last week where the TIF, the five-fifths TIF was discussed. I just want to point out for everyone to, to know that they had experts um, on this call saying that the use of geo bonds to help fund a TIF, uh, it should not be done. Even the staff, our staff said they would not recommend geo bonds. So please don't go there with this TIF funding. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carlos Sutton.
Good evening. I would like to first uh, agree with the comments made by Ray, Bruce, and Mike. Uh, excellent comments about uh, the direction that our city is going in. But I would also like to add my congratulations to Aretha Barnes and commend her for not following the previous leaders of, of that police department in marginalizing citizens, especially those of us that live in the fifth ward. I also uh, am very much opposed to the building and the commitment that the city's um, giving to developers in nineteen hundred Sherman. I also want to thank Sarah Flack for committing herself to try to find money through the ARA or any other source for small minority landlords who have taken a big hit with this coronavirus nineteen. I'm also against city bonds being used for any more improvements at Crown. Uh, when we're talking about landscaping, this seems like a bottomless pit to keep going back to over and over again and floating bonds to further endet the future citizens of Evanston. Again, condolences to Claire Kelly and to Cicely Fleming and the death of the two great, beautiful women that there were their mothers. Thank you.
Thank you. The only other person who signed up to speak is Marie Lynn Toussaint, who I believe is not in the Zoom. Seeing that that's the case, uh, we now move on. Uh, before we get to the consent agenda, I'd like to remove item A eight from the consent agenda. And I recognize council member Braithwaite to make a motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move item A eight, which is Resolution one twenty-nine R dash twenty-one, designation of honorary street sign name. And I'm gonna make one, one edit, and we made it at the APW to move the sign name from Judge Lionel Jean Baptiste Way to Honorable Lionel Jean Baptiste Way. And I think we made that correction at APW.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, first of all, I'd like the clerk to add council member Reed to the roll. Council member Braithwaite moves item A eight, which has been amended and improved in APW. Council member Burns seconds the motion. Um, and on this item, uh, we'll begin with council member uh, Braithwaite, followed by Reed.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Uh, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to thank everyone who came out this evening in support, both in person as well as the Zoom. Uh, for many of us that know Lionel or Brother Lionel, or more importantly, the, the judge, um, you will know that he's had a long service to the Evanston community, uh, long before he joined city council. And when I first met him, he was very involved with the NAACP, uh, very involved with educating our youth and a champion uh, for all youth, particularly our black and brown youth, as well as our seniors. I just want to acknowledge that Lenore is here, as well as his uh, family members. Uh, this, this application was submitted by Gabrielle Walker, uh, his niece. And in addition to celebrating his tenures on council where um, not only was he a leader and just a very instrumental person in my life, but in terms of his community work in starting our MWEBE committee, it was Brother Lionel that was the initiator of that. Um, in addition to that, and I mentioned before youth services, he was the one who was instrumental in starting our youth services outreach team. As well, when he was on council, he laid the foundation for reparations. And here we are today, years after that work, where the first city in Evanston poised to award um, reparations on a municipal level. All of these things because of his work. Um, this past weekend, we had over fifty delegates from across the nation and one international, again, because of the foundation that he has laid. I want to acknowledge uh, our former alderman, Robin Rue Simmons, who helped kick the door and open it up uh, for our town to be the first. I guess as I close out, you know, to my brother Lionel, um, not only is he a good example, is just a black male, and I would even go as far to say a father figure, but you walk up straight in this community and you teach all of us black men to walk up straight. And I want to give you just the highest honor for that. Um, not only do you lead by example for us, but you serve as a black leader here in our town for those of us who have come behind you, as well as any other of us who stands behind the stairs. I think myself, I don't know if there's others in the community, before I could even put my name on a petition or run, many of us had to sit in front of Mayor Morton, sometimes more than, more than once. And I think in her absence, and although I know that you can't endorse because of being a judge, I think it's so critical, and he has always made himself as available as, as possible, that you are a voice, you're someone that anyone seeking to serve on any level in our community should definitely take time out of their schedules to meet and sit in front of. And I can't say that about many people in this town. So as we, you know, close out, and I'm sure this will pass, um, the next steps after this, we'll look forward to hosting a larger event, hopefully when the weather is warmer and with less COVID protocols and celebrate you the way that you deserve. I love you, my brother. Congratulations in advance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is council member Reed, followed by Winn.
This is uh, something uh, that is extremely easy to support. The only hardship that I'm having is that I would like to actually name the street after you. Uh, or a street or a building or something after you. I um, you were one of the first political figures that I knew about. I, I distinctly remember uh, my grandmother uh, coming home and I, I, you, I grew up on Emerson, right down the street from your old law office. And I distinctly remember my grandmother coming home and saying that she just met with the, this lawyer down the street who's also the alderman. And I just thought that was the coolest thing. I'm like, whoa, the alderman, you know? I thought you were my alderman for the longest. I thought I lived in your ward. And as I got older, I realized, oh, boundaries are a little different. Um, and then as I um, you know, grew older and grew into uh, wanting to uh, emulate many of the black leaders that I've seen in our community uh, and then serve here on the council, um, you are someone who I've spoken to, your wife is someone who I've met on a, a numerous occasions and gotten the opportunity to meet. Uh, and you are truly a shining light of what it means to be a black man in Evanston and a black leader in Evanston. Um, and in how that radiates beyond the borders of our city. Um, and I think following in the footsteps of some of the, the folks that I really admire, such as, you know, it, uh, you know, Alderman Jordan and, and his national reach, I think, um, I think that the history books and young black men, you know, a hundred years from now will be looking back on you the way uh, some folks have looked back on Alderman Jordan. Um, so, so thank you for your service. Uh, this is uh, well-deserved and um, maybe even more stuff is deserved uh, than this, but um, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council member Winn.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for um, giving me an opportunity to speak. Uh, I'm, I am so honored to be vote, to be able to vote on this. I uh, had the wonderful opportunity to uh, sit next to uh, Judge Jean, Judge Jean Baptiste for ten years here on the city council. I remember the night that you were sworn in for the first time and how important it was that you talked about your family. And over time, I've met so many members of your family. And may I just say that you are the most articulate family I have ever seen in terms of public speaking, all of you. Uh, so, and I do want to echo um, uh, council member Braithwaite. Uh, it was then Alderman Jean Baptiste who kept pushing this council and pushing our city staff about what about the kids who fall through the cracks? What are we doing for them? And it was you, Lionel, who, who were the spirit behind and pushed us to form the Youth and Young Adult Division. And that is truly one of the greatest legacies you've created here in this community, and it will just go on and on. And it's another example of your pushing an idea and making us all understand it and, and having it happen. And uh, I was on the council when we took that first reparations vote as well. And I remember talking with you about it and, and in great detail. And it was something that we all knew was far in the future, but we were really proud to cast that vote because you had, you had shown us the way and how critically important it was. There are so many ways in which you have served our community and continue to serve our community. Your example is enormous. And it, it, it is just an honor to know you and have to served on this city council with you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Council member Burns.
Um, yeah, I want to start off similarly by just really thinking, um, acknowledging um, the judge's family. You know, I know as someone who has tried to pursue the path that, 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 that you led, that my mother led and so many others, Alderman Holmes and others who you um, you know of because they do everything, they're involved in everything. There's not an area of, of life, of society, of our community that they're not a part of. And to do that, to put yourself out there like that, it requires family that is committed, that stands by you and with you and charges forward on every effort. They're right there with you, whether they get in the newspaper or not. Um, they're behind the scenes, uh, making it all possible. And I know for me, my mother, and now my wife and my children and my family has been that for me, and I know that's the same for you. So I just want to commend this family for really um, allowing you to lead and, and them leading in their own ways here in Evanston. I'm so proud of that. That is something that um, that, that you've also demonstrated uh, to me. And you know, Judge, you know, you're a moral leader in the community, like very few are. You know, you really, at least for me, give me the strength and give us the strength to push forward and do this really difficult work. Uh, you've also been an elected leader. And to be an effective elected leader, you have to build consensus. You know, I said this the other day, that I feel like it's my responsibility to try to have a good relationship with everyone up here because you need, you need, you need four other people to agree with you to move the, the agenda forward. And I remember in a conversation I had with former mayor Tisdale, she said, "There's one person that I've seen that was the most effective negotiator," and your name came up. And um, you know, that was a tremendous honor and, and great to, to hear. And I, I think I told you that at a, at a subsequent meeting. And that means a lot for, for Mayor Tisdale to say that, that of all the leaders that she's been around, the most effective negotiator that she was ever around was, was the judge here. Um, also, of course, a leader in the Haitian community, uh, a leader in law and civil rights. I think I just found out from our corporation council that the, the judge in his capacity as a, as a lawyer actually brought cases against institutions um, that had benefited from slavery to try to force them to um, to, to, to pay reparatory justice. And I just learned out, learned about that tonight. So, I mean, uh, this, this is long overdue, as, as Alderman Holmes said. And then, you know, lastly, just want to thank you personally for being a really a friend to my mother, you know, to my family, to me. Um, and, and as much as you're a leader and all those other ways I described, you're also a leader uh, as a friend and, and a role model for so many in this community. So I appreciate you, brother. And uh, I'm glad I was on the council. I said, I seconded this real quick because I wanted to, I wanted that opportunity. So I appreciate uh, it's, it's so great to be up here and to be able to honor you in this way. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, seeing that no other council members are requesting to speak, I'm gonna um, exert mayoral privilege and say some stuff, which I, I try not to do often, but this is a, this is an unusual occasion. You know, I asked uh, Judge Baptiste to swear me in when I became the mayor. Um, and I did that for a few reasons. One is because you're somebody I have an enormous amount of respect for, someone who I've watched the way you handle yourself and the kind of responsibility that you put on your shoulders, the responsibility for our youth and for our community. And I just, that's something that I've always admired tremendously. I did it in part because I think the thing, one of the things we ought to be proudest of as a community is our work on reparations. And I don't want anybody to forget the role that you played in getting that started. Uh, I think your name needs to be a part of that history because it's a part of that story. And I did it quite frankly, because I don't know how you pull this off, but even in today's polarized world, everybody loves you. It's, it seems like witchcraft, honestly. It's the only explanation I can imagine. This, this, you're just somebody who's beloved throughout this community. And, and all kidding aside, it's because people see what you stand for and where your heart is and where your values are and what responsibility, again, you put on your own shoulders to make things better for everybody around this town. Um, I wanted just to say two other quick things. Um, I didn't obviously have the privilege of serving with you, but just two things that, that haven't been mentioned so far. The first is, it, a lot of people forget, but I, I don't think we should forget the extraordinary political achievement that you managed to pull off in two thousand and five. Getting elected as a write-in candidate. And let's just remind ourselves, a write-in candidate with the name Lionel Jean Baptiste, there's punctuation in that name. That, it's impressive anyway. It's just as a, you know, X's and O's and nuts and bolts, it's a, it's a difficult thing to do. But it's obviously a statement about how your community feels about you. Not a lot of us could pull that off, but you could, was in style because of the esteem you're held in, in that community. And the other thing I want to say is that um, you know, one fun thing about representing Evanston is in the legislature is that everybody around the state knows an Evanstonian they want to talk to you about. I remember when I got to the legislature, my now wonderful friend, our attorney general, then state senator Kwame Raoul, he had to talk to me immediately about Lionel Jean Baptiste. And he had to talk as a younger person of Haitian descent about what you meant to him, about what your example said to him and what it meant in the whole community. I've never forgotten that conversation that he wanted to have with me immediately. And it, it said something about the extent to which your character and achievements reverberate well beyond our city's borders. And I just wanted to share that with you and with the community because that, the example that you've set, it means a lot to the seventy-eight thousand people who live in this town, but it means a lot to people who live beyond our borders as well. So, thank you so much. So thank you so much for all you've done to show all of us how to conduct ourselves. And with that, would the clerk please call the roll on item A8? Could be a close call here. We'll see what happens.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
And with six voting in favor and none voting against, item A8 passes. Congratulations, Your Honor.
Well, it's a great honor. And I think that the bottom line is, to whom much is given, much is expected. And so in giving, you receive so much more. I've been blessed to have a strong wife, who's my partner for, well, we've been married for 45 years and, you know, together for 48. I have strong backup, my son, who is a cutting-edge kind of person, and my other children, my sisters. I grew up with five sisters, and they all were fierce, and everybody loved one another. And, you know, our parents were folks of meager means but high expectations. You know, I often say that my mother couldn't afford to buy tokens for us to go to the beach, but she found a way from her factory job and my father working, you know, mopping floors to pay for all their children to go to St. Mary's, private school, and stuff like that. So, you know, the priorities are what's important. We have to stay consistent. We have to stay at the bare case, because if we don't do it, then no one is doing it for us. So, thank you very much for this honor. I have to tell you a joke because when I called my cousin, who's one of the comedians in the family, Marie, in Florida, she said, "Well, you know, they gave you a key before, a key to the city. Now they want, you know, there's a proposal to name a street after you. Are they going to give you a house?" I said, "Marie, no, they're not going to do that." But I really appreciate the love. And I think, you know, with all the difficulties, as one of our citizens who spoke about crime and difficulties that we're facing, that our perseverance is the most important thing to do the right thing. You know, we don't always win, but we have to continue to fight. So, thank you very much for your appreciation, and I appreciate you back. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, and congratulations again. That does bring us to the consent agenda. Obviously, item A8 has already been removed. Would anyone like to make further removals from the consent agenda?
Yes, one second.
P2, please.
I have to say thank you to one of the really active members of our family, and that is Gabrielle Aguilar Walker Jean Paul. Gabrielle was the one who took the lead and pulled Peter's coat tail and said, "We've got to do this. We've got to move this process forward." So I want to make sure that we recognize that it is her leadership that has brought us this far. Thank you very much once again.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you. So far, I have items A8 and P2. Would anyone else like to remove any further items from the consent agenda?
I don't think I want to remove them because I'm perfectly fine with them, but I do just want to note, or actually, what I want to do is we need to suspend the rules, I believe, for item A12 and A13, as those policy changes did not go through the referrals committee as they should have.
I did not, I would not agree with that assessment of those items. I read those items and came to a different conclusion. If someone wants to make a motion to suspend the rules, I would certainly entertain it and allow a vote. I don't believe it's necessary myself.
They're also for introduction, so there's no need to suspend something that's for introduction.
The only reason I raised that is we adopted a rule that said no item that changes policy will appear on an agenda unless it has gone through the referrals committee. And these two things are very clearly policy changes. They're amending ordinances, and in some cases, I don't know if maybe news racks needs to be an ordinance, but certainly policy changes and certainly would have to go through the referrals process according to our rules.
No, I understood your point. I disagree, but I don't think there's any sense in haggling about it. If you want to make a motion to suspend the rules for those two items, I'm sure the motion will pass. Again, I don't think it's necessary, but I have no objection to allowing that motion to be made and voted on.
I'll make the motion, but the reason I'm making is we have the rule. It should be followed.
Councilmember Reed moves to suspend the rule regarding the referrals committee to allow items A12 and A13 to be considered. Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
Councilmember Burns, seconds. Is there any discussion?
There's discussion. Councilwoman Cummings, can you weigh in on this? The back and forth is not helpful to me, who I just want some consistency on this issue. So can you help us out here?
Good evening, members of City Council, City Clerk, and City Manager Ganderzki, Nicholas Cummings, Corporation Council. And not to muddy the waters even further, but both Councilmember Reed and the mayor are correct. The rule does require that it go through the referrals committee. However, in this particular instance, the committee, it actually appeared on the APW agenda first, and so I'm assuming that the referrals committee put it on the APW agenda. And even if not, it doesn't, it's actually not changing any sort of policy right now, anyway. It is for introduction and is for debate, and it could not pass the City Council at all.
So just to be clear, I think you're siding with Councilmember Reed, which is good for me to know. In my view, these are administrative changes that therefore don't trigger the rule. If, I think Councilmember Burns is right, we should, it's worth, you know, coming to some agreement about it. But I read, when I first saw the agenda, I had the same kind of thought. I looked more carefully at the items, and I ultimately concluded they were fundamentally administrative rather than public policy changes and therefore appropriate to go on the agenda.
And if I can chime in, I agree with you. These look like things that should be administrative. And so part of my bringing this up is, you know, should these things be in an ordinance? Or should we leave more leeway up to staff to make a minute decision about news racks?
So they are administrative changes, but they do change the city code, in which that's where in the issue becomes in terms of the public policy. It does amend the city code in both instances because news racks are codified. The MWEBE loophole that we're trying to close is codified, and it needs to be codified in order to close it. They are administrative changes, absolutely, but they are, they do change the city code. So I believe both of you are correct.
Well, I mean, so now I'm really in strong agreement with Councilmember Burns. Certainly, my reading of the rule doesn't, the rule doesn't, isn't connected to the question of whether the policy change occurs in the form of an ordinance or a resolution or anything else. So I understand that it's a change in the city code that, to my mind, isn't germane to the question of whether the rule is triggered. And so I would say, certainly given the ambiguity, we should continue on and take the vote to suspend the rules, which I would recommend everyone agree to do irrespective of whether you personally believe that it's necessary. But maybe we should have an offline conversation to achieve a greater understanding of what situations the rule applies to so that we don't have this kind of back and forth. But go ahead, Ms. Ganderzki.
I was going to say exactly that. And just a little bit of legislative history, I recall that this was fixing two issues with regard to the ordinance, not changing a policy. So to that end, our discussion at rules was referrals are for major policy changes, not for fixes to ordinances, so whether it's an ordinance or not shouldn't matter. That was my recollection of the rule, but neither here nor there, I think the mayor's correct. We can talk off on.
All right. Is there any further discussion on the motion to suspend the rules regarding items A12 and A13? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the rule suspension motion?
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
There are six voting in favor and none voting against, and so the rules are suspended, which should remove any disagreement regarding the question of whether items A12 and A13 are eligible for a vote. Last call on removing anything but items A8 and P2 from the consent agenda. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda.
Second?
Councilmember Braithwaite moves passage of the whole consent agenda except for A8 and P2. Councilmember Newsma, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
On this matter, there are six voting in favor and none voting against, and so the whole consent agenda except for A8 and P2 passes. A8 is, of course, already passed, so that brings us to item P2. Would Councilmember Revel like to make a motion?
I'm sorry, I was reading something. Which one am I doing?
I'm sorry, Councilmember, my bad. Item P2.
Yep, okay. I move adoption of ordinance 123-0-21, granting a major adjustment to the plan development located at 1900 Sherman Avenue.
Second?
Councilmember Revel moves item P2. Councilmember, is it Councilmember Reed? Councilmember Reed, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Newsma, followed by Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled this item from the consent agenda at the request of our colleague, Councilmember Kelly, who cannot be with us here tonight. I want to make it clear that I am supporting this ordinance, but I'm asking these questions on Claire's behalf. Several questions regarding property taxes from this property. First question is, will Evanston receive property taxes from the Emerson? If there's somebody available to speak to that.
Ms. Nyden, are you?
I'm available to speak to it, if it's okay.
Mr. Minocchio from the Housing Authority of County.
Thank you, Mayor. And I thank you for the question. Want to extend my condolences as well to both Councilmembers Fleming and Kelly on their losses. Yes, the City of Evanston will receive real estate tax payments from this property. The affordable units will be tax exempt. The other units, there will be some taxes paid on those. We'll take advantage of the recently passed legislation in Springfield that gives developers that have included more than 20% of their units as affordable a bit of an abatement. But yes, there'll be the taxes paid.
Thank you. He answered all my questions.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Next is Councilmember Reed.
Yes, Councilmember Kelly was working the lines today, but that'll save me some time. I had a long conversation with some first orders, with a first order who was here earlier and others about this project over the last few days, and I gained one bit of really clear understanding. So first, I just want to establish some facts to make sure I am on the same page with the information that I received, Mr. Minocchio. So originally, there were going to be 168 units, correct?
Yeah, it's Minocchio.
Oh, I'm sorry, Minocchio.
Okay.
So, yes, there are 168 units originally.
Yes.
And because this building, the location, it was eliminating 22 parking spots from the Perlman, correct?
Yes, the surface parking, that's where the building's going to go.
22 spots would be eliminated from the Perlman. And so because of our zoning, or parking minimum requirements, you would have been required to, with the 22 spots that would need to be replaced by the Perlman, and then the number of spots necessary for this building at 168 units provide a total of 100 units, I'm sorry, 100 parking spots? Is that correct? 88 for the new building and then replaced in the 22 equals 100?
You know, just because we're getting into some numbers here, our consultant, Bill James, is on, our development consultant. Bill, do you want to step in here, please?
Yes, I would actually. I have to admit that I don't know what the ordinance would require because we moved beyond the ordinance from the very early stages. We were in discussions with city staff about parking and how parking does not need to be as much as the city code in this location because it's a transit-oriented development location. And the ordinance that was approved required 37 onsite spaces, actually 37 spaces in the below-grade parking structure, which we had to reduce due to the structural issue mentioned earlier at the previous meeting. So we need a reduction of 12 spaces in that underground facility to 25. And that's what we're here to ask the city for's relief on that.
Thank you. I'm just trying to establish a few facts to make sure that my understanding is clear. Okay, so it seems like that my numbers are about right, that in total, originally, there would have been about 100 parking spots needed to be provided. The reason I'm asking this, and then there's 50 of the units that would be provided off-site, and the discussion, I think, that we had was either the Link or E2 would provide those 50 off-site, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And then, so it seems, and then, so the underground, the units, the onsite parking spaces would include the 22 that you need to replace and then an additional 15 new onsite units. So that, 15 plus 22, that 30, whatever that is, 47 units. So is that correct?
So we have spaces on the alley that will be reconfigured to provide for handicap spaces that were on the 22-space parking lot. I believe that was, that is now 16 plus 37. So if I'm correct, that was 53 total of parking spaces on the site is what was required per the approved plan.
And now, how many total onsite parking spots will there be? So that's an increase of how many net new parking spots onsite? Because you already had the 22 that were there previously.
And 22, there is currently 18 on the alley, okay? So, you know, that's 40 spaces.
Okay. What I'm trying to ensure is that, I think the new ask is to move even more of those parking spaces off-site. You're eliminating, you're going now from 168, from 168 units to 152 units, and with that reduction, you're asking to move even more parking spaces off-site.
Well, with the reduction of 16 units, the demand for parking will be less, and we estimate that the net additional demand from removing the 12 parking spaces will be four parking spaces because the utilization rate of structural parking in the Link and the E2 building is about one-half space per unit. So by reducing the number of units on this new building by 16, we would be reducing the parking demand by eight. And with a loss of 12 spaces, there's an additional four spaces that we need to account for in terms of unmet demand.
Okay, thank you. Where I'm going with this, and I'm sure this is flying over a number of people's heads, you know, what I'm looking to see is that more of these units are kept onsite. I know that you're reducing, you know, the building size by, or the unit, number of units by 16, and certainly, I think it's reasonable to reduce the number of parking spaces in accordance with that. And heck, I am someone who, in many cases, would say, you know, let you and the private market figure out your own parking requirements. I'm not a huge fan of parking minimums in government generally, but this is particularly a building for folks who are seniors and disabled, and I would just love to see more of those parking units kept onsite. And if you are going to move them off-site, I know, again, I know the math on this, particularly you're building an underground parking structure, you know, $35,000 plus is what you're paying per parking stall, so I understand how significant the cost is here. So I'd just love to see, you know, some public amenities, that the train station there is not very accessible to seniors, it doesn't have an elevator, you know, I'd love to see investments in other mobility opportunities for folks so they don't need cars in that area.
Just one point, this will be a 55, an overbuilding, so we anticipate more of an active senior population than handicap people who, you know, couldn't walk 1,000 feet to an onsite parking location. So, and there will be some, obviously, but there'll be some people in wheelchairs as there is everywhere, but this is not specifically for handicapped individuals.
If I could just add in, Councilmember, you know, in all honesty, there's been a lot of talk about this project over the last year, you know, we've been coming to these meetings for a year. The last thing I wanted to do was reduce onsite parking, the last thing. I have a building that I not only have to build, but I have to lease, and the market rate units, certainly, I would like to have the underground parking more spaces. The fact of the matter is that it doesn't work. We've heard a lot about this 12-foot separation, that's nonsense, there, you know, it's a structural issue below ground, that the buildings are still going to be next to each other. And if I could, just for a minute, and I'll only take a minute, I want to just remind the council members who were good enough to support us already, and the council members who I've spoken to, the new members, about what this building is. So right now, it's a parking lot, a surface parking lot. It's going to be a beautiful, attractive, architecturally significant building, but I think more important, it's going to have 51 affordable apartments out of 152. And I'm not going to talk a lot about median incomes and all that because that gets confusing and we all get lost. Let me say this, the 34 apartments that are going to be subsidized by us, the person that lives in that unit, the low-income person's going to pay about $300 a month on average. Now, we've heard a lot about the fact that, well, it's really only 34 units, it's not 51. No, yes, it is 51, because in the other 17 units, those folks are going to pay half the market rent, or less, and those folks are 80% of income or below. So it is 51 out of 152. It's more than one-third affordable on a lot that we own, that we're leveraging, and it's going to have much, much more amenities in terms of green space and public spaces and links to the community. It's going to be an attractive addition. I want to remind people too that, you know, we're doing this without any government development subsidies, very important to note. So what we're doing, in fact, is building a building that has market-rate tenants, that's true, but those market-rate tenants are in essence paying for the construction of the 51. That's groundbreaking. That doesn't happen. It hasn't happened, as far as I know. And it's a great investment for the taxpayers, a great investment. This is going to be a long-term asset, not only for the city of Evanston, not only for the lower-income people that live there, but for the government. The government has this asset. Very rare that a government would be able to maintain an asset like this. Almost always, that's in private hands. Now, we do have a private partner that has expertise in this, but I want everybody to understand that this is a government asset that's going to stay in government hands.
All right, Mr. Rockio, can I, I think Councilmember Reed wanted to follow up.
Yeah, I just want to say one, I mean, I just want to make it clear, I support this project, and I'm supporting you here. I just want to see if we can, what we can do to get either more onsite parking, more parking onsite for this particular population, or, you know, what kind of public benefits can be offered to counteract that, such as, you know, working with CTA to add an elevator. I think that'd be, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars.
You know, I think there's probably, we'd be willing, we want to see an elevator there, but the public benefit, I think, Councilmember, we're bringing is significant. Now, I'll do my best to get as many spaces onsite because I said it's in our best interest as well, so I agree with you. I'll get as many as I can, yes.
All right, thank you very much. First of all, the clerk please add Councilmember Sufferton to the roll. And having done that, will the clerk then please call the roll on item P-2?
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton, sorry. Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Glenn?
On this matter, there are seven voting in favor, none voting against, and so item P-2 passes. Thank you to the, to Mr. Minocchio for the testimony. This brings us now to call of the wards, beginning with Councilmember Newsma.
Point of clarification, Mr. Mayor, the appointments, item A-1, was that all, that was on the consent agenda?
Yeah, this has been a confusion of mine for a long time, that it's part of the consent agenda but not always labeled in a way that's totally clear, but my understanding when I became mayor is that, is that the appointments are a portion of the consent agenda and would need to be pulled off if people did not want to vote on them as a portion of the consent agenda.
Okay, I am ready to proceed then. I want to offer my reluctant congratulations to Aretha Barnes on her upcoming retirement. Aretha, it's been a pleasure working with you over these last few months, as well as getting to know some of the officers under your command. I have gotten to know several of them at this point in my tenure as alderman, and I do have to say, from the folks that I know serving the city of Evanston and the Evanston Police Department, they are the kind of people that we want in that job. So, you know, I look forward to working with the next, the interim police chief, whoever that might be, and finding another police chief to fill the large shoes that Chief Barnes leaves behind. I want to acknowledge a fourth ward issue of some concern that has been thankfully receiving a lot of attention recently. This is the issue of Albany Care. I'd like to thank the neighbors that have been involved in this productive discussion, trying to find a way to make sure that our friends and neighbors who live inside of Albany Care are receiving the care that they deserve. And certainly, our city staff deserves a lot of thanks too, Ike Ogbo's department, Audrey Thompson, and a special shout-out to Candace Mitchell, the long-term care ombudsman, who's really doing a lot of work on this issue. Looking ahead to January, I'm going to do a virtual ward meeting on Tuesday, January 4th, and regular office hours on Saturday, January 8th. Thanks.
Councilmember Burns?
Yeah, just also want to congratulate Chief Barnes on her retirement. It was, been a joy to work with you. It was a call I look forward to answering, and always had really great calls with her, effective communication, and she was a huge help to me over the past several weeks and months. So thank you so much for your service, and that is all. Thank you.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Well, to interim Chief Barnes, I just want to let you know how dismayed I was to hear that you were going to be retiring. It's really been a pleasure to work with you and really appreciate your many years of distinguished and committed service to our community. You'll be greatly missed. And then, just to seventh ward residents, just a reminder that we have award meeting, virtual award meeting this Thursday, 7:00 p.m. We're going to be hearing, in particular, from representatives from Northwestern about rebuilding the stadium project and the timeline and ways in which residents are going to be able to be involved in sharing their thoughts and concerns.
Councilmember Reed?
Thank you. I also want to add my congratulations to, and appreciation to deputy, or to interim Chief Barnes. I, you know, I haven't been a council member for too long, and so only had a bit of our former police chief and a bit of this chief as a council member, but Chief Barnes, I certainly felt on top of things of what was going on in my ward with Chief Barnes, and so your service as chief will be missed, your service to the community. Chief Barnes, I always felt, even before I had any official position, that you were someone in the community that I could go to if I had an issue with the police department, and I felt as though you were, you know, one of the, you know, if we talk about some officers being bad apples, you were the golden apple within our police department. So you will certainly, your presence will be missed on our force. For the eighth ward residents, we have a ward meeting on this Saturday at 1:00. The information is posted on the city's website, so you can join into that. I believe we will have, I know we'll certainly have our officer, our ninth ward, or eighth ward and ninth ward problem-solving team officer, Corey McCray. I'm wondering if we're going to have our interim city manager, I believe she'll be coming to one of our meetings soon, and we will be discussing violence as well as other issues at that meeting. And I will say to the public commenter earlier, you know, what a privilege it is to have felt safe in Evanston for a long time, and what a privilege it is to have a greater police response be the thing that makes you feel safer. That is not something that I think every member in our community shares, and I'm really hoping this council, with the spike in, I think there's a definite spike in property crime, you know, crime related to poverty, and I hope that this council, with our ARPA funds and just with a commitment moving forward, really works to tackle the root causes of some of those issues rather than try to tamp it down with a greater militarized police presence. And then, lastly, you know, I'm hoping that we can have, this is a council that needs additional revenue, I'm hoping that we can have the proposal to, for Lakefront folks to pay a fair share, those are our richest residents, you know, just those, you know, those property owners paying an average of about $200 more a month would raise $100,000 in revenue for the city, that is not an amount of money to scoff at. And, you know, for them, our wealthiest residents, that's a small drop in the bucket, and I'm hoping, you know, particularly as we understand issues of equity and reparations and the move where we had black folks moved away from the lakefront, and this could be a funding source equal to about a third of the current funding. We receive about $200,000 a year now for reparations, you know, another $100,000 would increase that by a third and be a substantial step. So I'm hoping we can make those moves and really show our progressive values and shift the burden of folks who can bear it the most. That ends my report. Thank you.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to join with others in terms of wishing condolences and prayers. I've shared it with Alderman Fleming and now with Alderman Kelly, as well, one of the families in my ward, the Judon family, for recent deaths. It's tough around the holiday season, particularly when we lose lives and those near and dear to us, so I always encourage people to continue to check on our seniors, particularly in this holiday season. And with that holiday season theme, I also want to say thank you very much to all the residents who came out to our ward meeting this past, last Thursday, to discuss city manager, also ARPA funds and other concerns that were brought up. As we go into this holiday season, I pray that the staff is able to recharge their batteries, however they choose to do so, spend time with their loved ones. This, I feel, was a very difficult transitional year for many of us behind here, and you are the lifeline that helps to provide so much support to our wonderful city. So to the city manager, I think she stepped out, if you can convey that. I think that that's important, as well as the council members, I hope that you're able to recharge your batteries as well. This past weekend, I just want to call out Judge Lionel Jean-Baptiste, we talked about his groundbreaking work in reparations, and this past weekend, we hosted our city of Evanston with, along with the Honorable Robin Rue Simmons, her new organization, First Step, NARC and Cobra, the two national organizations that helped to certify our work and provide some of the training and assistance to get us to this point. They hosted over 50 people from all over, I say all over the state, and there was one person who was from another country as well as speakers, and for the time that I was able to spend there, it was really incredible just to meet all the people from around the country and the municipalities that are engaged in this work, and everyone at different stages. And I just, it was a good reminder that, and I'll speak for myself and hopefully it extends to others, that people continue to watch our town, and I think for the good that we are doing, it's important that we acknowledge that and walk in that light. And in the same vein, I'm taking a look at us and the numbers of staff that we've lost in a very short period of time. I would like to congratulate Chief Barnes and there are others, Kate Larkin, I wrote down Shanika, Sharon Johnson. I mean, everyone's losing, leaving for their own reasons, but I seriously hope in January that we take a look and understand the whys. Nothing that we can get into tonight, but it's getting to that point where we really need to take a look at what we're doing, how we're impacting staff's decisions, how they're being paid and compensated. I think from an organizational standpoint, we've lost a lot of institutional memory. We won't feel it today, tomorrow, within a year, but downstream, we continue at this pace to bleed out with 19 officers down, we heard from a resident. I want to stop there, but that's what I'm going to be thinking about during the downtime in terms of self-reflection and what can we do to course correct. So with that, thank you all very much for listening, and happy holidays to you all.
Councilmember Glenn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to say thank you to Councilmember Braithwaite for lifting up that issue. I think it's something that we all do need to think about and look inward and figure out what is going on with our staff, because they are our assets. They are the ones who execute all of the policies that we do here. And I know it's a difficult time for many people in the workforce, but this is a lot of institutional memory and expertise that we really need here in Evanston. I want to join my colleagues in offering my sincere condolences to both Cicely Fleming and Claire Kelly on the, both of them losing their mothers. This is a difficult time to lose a beloved family member. And it is a bittersweet goodbye to Chief Aretha Barnes. She has just been She has just been an extraordinary police officer for our community, and I want to thank her for every single day of the 25 years of her dedicated professional services to the city of Evanston. She made, as many others of us have said, she made the job of being a councilmember easier in so many ways, and I wish her the best of luck in her future, and I hope that she has been an example to many of our other younger police officers. And with that, I'll say happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, Councilmember Nusma is recognized for her motion.
Pursuant to 5 Illinois compiled statutes 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel. This agenda item is a permitted subject to be considered in executive session and is enumerated, and is an enumerated exception under the Opens Meeting Act set forth in 5 ALCS 120/2A and C1.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves it to be resolved into executive session. Councilmember Wynn seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and at 8:54 PM on December 13th, the Evanston City Council resolves into an executive session discussion to begin immediately.